It is now ten forty-two PM and the board is back in session. We're going to move to our action item, Recovery of District Records. And I have a statement to read on the matter. On April fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, before her term as a board member ended on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, Stephanie Clark downloaded to her personal computer approximately twenty thousand district email records spanning her four-year term on the board. When a district technology employee realized what was happening, the download route was closed for all board members. Ms. Clark then transferred approximately six additional emails from the district's network to her personal email. Legal counsel was contacted for advice, researched the matter, and advised the district. Confidential student and employee information and other records exempt from disclosure under the Illinois Freedom of Information Act were among the thousands of records downloaded to Ms. Clark's personal email address. The board has been advised by its attorney that the downloading and retention of such records is inconsistent with a number of legal principles, including the acceptable use provisions of Board Policy nine point oh on technology, Board Policies, state and federal laws on the confidentiality of student records, state law on the confidentiality of employment records, state law on the retention and transfer of records, and the record ownership rights of the board. The board has also identified Administrative Procedure seven point three four zero Administrative Procedure one. When this situation was brought to my attention as board president, I requested Ms. Clark on May first to treat the records as confidential, retain them, and not disclose them to anyone else while the board determined what to do. On May eight, Ms. Clark advised me that she would not discuss the records issue by telephone or text. After board consideration, on May eleventh, the board requested Ms. Clark to return the records. On June sixth, a certified letter with a return receipt request was made to Ms. Clark to either return the records, destroy them in an appropriately secure manner, or confirm their destruction in writing. The option was also offered for Ms. Clark to identify the records she believed were subject to disclosure under FOIA, which would then be evaluated by the district. Ms. Clark's next response to the district's three communications came on Friday, June fourteenth, asking for time to respond and requesting that the district provide her with legal counsel or reimburse her legal expenses. On June eighteenth, Ms. Clark asked to meet with Dr. Bruno and the board's attorney, which the meeting took place on June twenty-sixth. At that meeting, Ms. Clark stated that she had deleted the records downloaded to her computer and that she had honored and will continue to honor her commitment to confidentiality. She also stated that she had some emails which she transferred after the download, as well as a box or so of documents from her time on the board. Ms. Clark's request for appointment of an attorney or reimbursements of legal expenses were not discussed at that meeting. Later in the day, after the June twenty-sixth meeting, the board asked Ms. Clark to confirm in writing that the emails had been destroyed and not transferred or retained in any other format. On June twenty-seven, in a letter to me, Ms. Clark declined to do so. The board considered Ms. Clark's refusal as part of a closed-session discussion at a special meeting that evening. On June twenty-eighth, the board advised Ms. Clark of an opportunity to meet to resolve the records issues before a July tenth special board meeting, and that pending formal action by the board, an attorney to represent her would not be appointed and her legal expenses would not be reimbursed. On June twenty-ninth, Ms. Clark requested that the July tenth board meeting be delayed until the end of July to permit her more time to respond. Given the consensus of the board at the June twenty-seventh meeting, I declined to delay the July tenth meeting. On July ninth, the district received a letter from Ms. Clark's attorney presenting his view of the circumstances regarding the emails, including a statement that Ms. Clark had securely deleted the emails immediately after the download and has not kept any of the downloaded files. In the letter, the attorney also expressed concern that board action had not been taken on and requested that the board honor Ms. Clark's requests regarding appointment of an attorney or reimbursement of her legal fees. Finally, the attorney requested that his letter be read into and made a part of the open session record of the July tenth meeting. Ms. Clark's attorney also asserted in his July ninth letter the singling out of Ms. Clark. The board believes this is not supported by the facts and disagrees with the attorney's characterization. Ms. Clark's actions called for steps to protect the confidentiality of district records, including student and employee information. The board has attempted to do so without success until confirmation of the destruction of the emails was received in writing in the July ninth letter from Ms. Clark's attorney. The board's acceptance of the representations contained in the July ninth letter from Ms. Clark's attorney will resolve the email download issue, and the board can now move on to address access to records by outgoing board members and employees and former board members and employees through policy development. The board appreciates Ms. Clark's working with the district to resolve the issues related to the downloaded emails. Additionally, Ms. Clark has requested that the July ninth letter from her attorney be read into and to be made part of the record, and I will read that letter into the record at this point. So this is the letter sent from Ms. Clark's attorney, Stephen Ruffalo, dated July ninth. It is in reference to Stephanie Clark, Response to Disputed Claims of Robert Bruno slash School District Forty-One. It's addressed to Ms. Moke. Dear Ms. Moke, please provide a complete copy of this letter to all sitting members of the school board for Glen Ellen School District Forty-One in advance of the board's special meeting, I am told will be convened on the evening of July tenth, two thousand and nineteen. In my capacity as legal counsel to Ms. Clark in the above caption dispute and any litigation which may ensue, I am also requesting that this letter be read into the record in open session so that the record of proceedings accurately includes the contents of this letter and the statements of fact provided herein. Prior to being sworn into office, Ms. Clark took an oath to faithfully serve as a District Forty-One school member during her term, which spanned between April two fifteen and April two thousand and nineteen. Having proudly served as president of the board, Ms. Clark has administered this same oath to many of the currently sitting board members. Ms. Clark is proud of her record of public service on this board and has at all times throughout her board tenure adhered to that oath, the code of conduct, all applicable policy, laws, and regulations governing her conduct as a school board member. Presently, President Bruno claims that Ms. Clark acted inappropriately when, in April of two nineteen, and then in parentheses, he states, while still a sitting school board member, she used a Google archival platform installed and supplied by District Forty-One for use by all school board members to attempt to copy and archive certain emails she authored and received. Ms. Clark wished to use the archival tool in order to preserve the selected emails should a record of them ever be needed to defend the district herself or her fellow board members. When Ms. Clark's attempt to archive this handful of emails resulted in an archive file containing far more than though she sought to copy, she immediately deleted the entire archive file and all of its contents. She has kept no portion of this file and instead securely deleted the entire file, as she has repeatedly advised President Bruno and the school board's counsel, Mr. Faulkner. Unpersuaded and driven by something other than the actual facts at hand, Mr. Bruno now insists that Ms. Clark jump through hoops of his own making or face the specter of litigation. Twice, Ms. Clark has submitted her written request that the school board appoint her legal counsel as provided for in the school code, which affords legal counsel for the defense and indemnifies current and former board members facing claims of this type. Twice, President Bruno has knowingly ignored her written request and failed to take any board action on her request, and instead has insisted that she will not be provided legal defense or reimbursement pending formal action by the board. Given President Bruno's election to ignore these requests, Ms. Clark has been forced to retain me as her legal counsel and seeks complete reimbursement for all fees expended in her defense in this inquest and in any litigation which may ensue, all as part of the school district's clear duty to defend and indemnify her. The background surrounding President Bruno's unending obsession with Ms. Clark reveals a clear motive to muzzle Ms. Clark. Since her school board term ended this past April, Ms. Clark has been vocal in her opposition to many political decisions that have been made by this board and has openly questioned the path and direction that current board leadership has taken the district down. While always respectful in her dissent, Ms. Clark has a fundamental right to espouse her opinions, speak, and associate freely, and to participate in the governance of a school board that she herself led as president during her term. Although such acts should be welcome, as they are legally protected elements of free speech, Ms. Clark has, since the first month following her departure from the board, been singled out by President Bruno, who has seen fit to subject her to his own unreasonable demands, all without any recognized legal authority for doing so. Indeed, Bruno has seen fit to author over a dozen emails, including four demand letters, all mandating unique request of her, not made of any other former school board members. Sadly, this pattern of correspondence has escalated to include several threats to file suit against Ms. Clark if she does not bend to President Bruno's will, demanding that she sign a factually false and inaccurate sworn statement crafted by school board legal counsel. This demand letter was supplied to Ms. Clark at five o'clock PM on June twenty-sixth with Bruno's edict that if she signed and returned this sworn statement to him by one o'clock PM on June twenty-seventh, he would then cancel the pending board meeting slash inquest to be impaneled against her. In response to these demands, Ms. Clark has repeatedly responded to Mr. Bruno's correspondence and has actually met with him and the school board counsel on the morning of June twenty-sixth, during which she fully explained that she has done nothing wrong, nothing unlawful, and nothing to violate any policies or laws at any time during her board tenure. Oddly, in this meeting, Mr. Faulkner, who served as the board's legal counsel throughout Ms. Clark's term on the board, not only failed to advise or defend her, but instead acted as if he was counsel opposed to her, even though the duty to defend her from such claims as a former board member was clear and free from doubt. Just as Ms. Clark made abundantly clear to Bruno and Faulkner on the morning of June twenty-sixth, let the record reflect that she has not and will not engage in any conduct that, if taken, would violate her oath, any policies or laws to which she is duty-bound to adhere. Final paragraph. However you choose to proceed, please understand that Ms. Clark will not be signing the false sworn statement or any other manufactured artifice that President Bruno or Attorney Faulkner have or will put before her, as she has no legal obligation to do so. If Ms. Clark's position as such and her vocal dissent over the current board leadership causes you to initiate litigation against her, then please know that I will happily defend her, seek full reimbursement of all my fees and costs from District Forty-One, and assert all of the claims and defenses she has based on what has transpired thus far in this very sad episode in our history of District Forty-One's school board governance, very truly yours, and that it's signed, Stephen Ruffalo. I am now asking the board for adoption of four separate motions. And I'll read the motions one at a time. To accept the representation by Ms. Clark's attorney in his July ninth, two thousand and nineteenth letter as the written representation sought by the board that the emails downloaded by Ms. Clark to her personal computer have been destroyed and that confidentiality has not been and will not be breached with respect to such records.
Motion.
Should we read just, Todd?
I would say get all four out.
Let's get all four out, but that's fine. So that's motion one. Motion two, to address-
Are we going to go on that?
We're going to, Bruce, yes, we're going to.
Oh, okay.
We're going to get them all, absolutely. Motion two, to address the remaining records retained by Ms. Clark as part of the board's policy development and adoption process addressing the accessing and retaining of district records by departing and former board members and employees. Third motion, to deny Ms. Clark's request with respect to legal representation and expense reimbursement as her actions appear beyond the scope of her authority and are not authorized, required, or not otherwise, I'm sorry, required or authorized by law. And then the fourth separate motion, to make the July ninth letter from Ms. Clark's attorney along with the email and written communications on this issue between the district and Ms. Clark a part of the record of this meeting. So we will now return to the first motion. Let me restate it and then-
Can I have a motion two?
Yes. Can I have a motion to accept the representation by Ms. Clark's attorney in his July ninth, two nineteen, letter as the written representation sought by the board that the emails downloaded by Ms. Clark to her personal computer have been destroyed and that confidentiality has not been and will not be breached with respect to such records?
Motion.
A second, please.
Second.
Second, discussion.
I'd just like to start by just thanking Ms. Clark for working with the district on this issue. While there was some back and forth over time, I just appreciate the fact of her working with the district to resolve this issue in an amicable manner. I just want to thank her on that.
Thank you.
I second that, Jason. I think, you know, I think we all hoped that in the ideal situation, this would be a super quick thing, but as we know, in most matters on the board, it was a little bit slower and messier than we had imagined and would have liked, but in the end, we got to where we needed to be to protect the records. And so I think we're all very grateful for Ms. Clark helping us to reach that destination. I also want to say that I appreciate the community's patience as we worked through this and had a number of closed sessions on the topic in allowing us to come to this point where we can be transparent about what has transpired and share with the community how we've worked to protect the records of the district.
Thank you. Any other comments on this motion?
Are we talking about just the first one?
Just the first one, yeah.
Yeah, as far as, a lot has happened, obviously. It's kind of a statement stated that, you know, unfortunately, I guess, you know, I always, as I mentioned in closed session, I kind of did a little, you know, kind of wishful thinking that, you know, had, you know, as stated here, that it was down, emails were, the records were downloaded while Ms. Clark was the board president at the time, and I wish it was kind of could be dealt with swiftly during her tenure, I think, maybe the optic of it coming after she was off the board where she doesn't now have, like, district attorney, you know, taxpayer money to kind of be on her side, now she's a private citizen. I just, I guess I just can't help but think, you know, maybe it could have been dealt differently, but at the end, that was very important for this board to sort the emails or recovered or delete it, and I think we have accomplished that, so.
Okay, any others?
I would say that, you know, I of course accept Mrs. Clark's word that these were destroyed. I'll probably be voting no on this because I don't even think we should be asking this question of her. She took an oath, like all of us have taken an oath. We swore to uphold our oath and keep privacy. The other thing is that these were emails that were sent to her, addressed to her, and downloaded while she was a sitting board member. There is no policy on how we should handle this or what we should do with this. It is unacceptable that we are going after one particular board member because in our attorney's viewpoint, we think she did something. We have not, what? We need to treat former volunteer board members more respectfully, with dignity and with trust. Also, I, I'll get to the next point later, but Ms. Clark is not being treated correctly here. She's being bullied, and I don't appreciate it.
I just kind of want to mention, too, the statement, you know, we got this tonight and, like, literally wordsmithed three pages, line by line, and I think it kind of speaks to, you know, with the attorney present and, you know, I understand that why he's here, but, I mean, essentially, you know, we have a district attorney and a clock and, you know, to deal with this, I hope we don't do this all the time because I, you know, to me, this is money not going towards education. And then kind of to your point, Bruce, I, I don't know, I can't, I can't sit here and not, and just not, to not say that, you know, that I also feel very similarly as you in it's, you know, kind of shame that was the kind of goal for that.
Also, I find it very ironic that he points out timing. This was discovered April fourteenth. Mr. Mike, who, our computer guy, I'm sorry, the computer person that noticed it, reported it, and yet, if it was important to us, why didn't we mention it to Ms. Clark while she was a sitting board member? We waited two and a half weeks until board leadership had changed to make any mention of the fact that this download had occurred. We didn't give her a little tap on the shoulder, hey, what happened? Nothing of that sort, no respect was given to her whatsoever in this matter. Neither was important on April fifteenth or April sixteenth, and Mrs. Clark should have been informed, or why did we wait two, two and a half, two and a half weeks until the board president changed and then all of a sudden, it was important? If it was important on that first day, it should have been important, it was more important then than it should have been in the two and a half weeks later. I find it very ironic and very telling of this board. The other thing is that Mrs. Clark was informed to think June twenty-seventh or twenty eighth that she would need to respond to this July tenth meeting. Well, in between June twenty-seventh and July tenth, there was a little thing called July four, which many people take on vacation, so we gave her precious little time to get in the jury, and then, only after that, I think on June twenty eighth, we informed her that we would not be paying for her legal expenses to defend her. I find that unconscionable.
Right.
Thank you, Bruce.
Because it's essentially, I mean, essentially, you're kind of, like, you know, I hate to say this, but governing body with the pockets and, you know, someone who's a private citizen having to consult attorney, being the position she was at, the political dynamic, I mean, I, it's a shame.
Any other board comments?
I think it's-
Yeah.
From other board members, hold on, on this issue, Bruce.
I think it's important to point out that for per policy, state law, and federal law, that the district is obligated to maintain the confidentiality of certain records, that all this action was predicated on us discovering this transfer of information. If you go through the timeline, here, I've just pulled up an email from Dr. Gordon back in May. He did let the district attorney know about this as soon as he was informed, and the district attorney said it was going to take a little time to research exactly how to react. Unfortunately, that's just how the timing was. I don't think there's anything suspect there. I, too, had wished that this would be resolved in a very simple manner, because to me, it should have been very simple to just say, all right, I destroyed these records, and I'm willing to attest to that. And ironically, I'm led to understand that had that happened, then the district would be able to indemnify her should there be any concern on the disclosure of any of these records. The district is, the obligation has to do with their liability, and by working with us, Ms. Clark actually would have had protection, but instead, she chose not to. And it's also important to point out that the actions that we're talking about are not the action while she was on the board, was the action after she was on the board, which is where we are trying to get affirmation in writing that she no longer had these records. That's all we are asking for.
Thank you.
Kind of to my point was what I tried to bring out, which was, you know, we did, I mean, I don't know why it took so, you know, so long, you know, I guess I could only say, like, being, trying to, you know, put myself in her shoe, which I kind of point out, that, you know, now that she's a private citizen, not having, you know, district attorney access, you know, and I think the way we went about it, I think, you know, us, you know, having the district behind us going after someone, I think it's just the way, you know, a lot of times, I think it's the actions and, and I ask, you know, now we're kind of bringing it out, now we're going back and forth on, you know, now we're really, really, I don't know, I guess I, you know, it just makes me-
In our first letter to her, which I wasn't really a part of, we threatened legal action against her while no policy actually was broken. And what she does with it, you know, if we want to do like the police in minority reports, where we look at crime before it actually happens, that's the wrong way to go about this. We are not pre-togged. We, there was, she has maintained her oath, and we should not be going after Mrs. Clark at all.
Jess?
I think we all agree that we should not be going after any person. I don't believe that is what we are doing. What we are doing is taking our duty to protect student and employee information very seriously, and what we needed was written confirmation that those records were handled responsibly. We got verbal confirmation, but we needed the written, and we got that today, and that's what this motion is about, to accept that written confirmation that we got today. And so, yeah, I think there isn't a single person who's happy with how this has gone, but I think we can all agree that we're happy that we were able to protect those records, and I'd like to hopefully call, well, call the question, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, wait, yeah. Oh, wait, yeah. Did Julie?
I just wanted.
Then we'll let Julie have a last word.
But yes, then I'm happy to take it up. I think there's been a lot of talk about going after Ms. Clark or attacking Ms. Clark. And I just wanted, and Jess sort of beat me to it a little bit, but I just wanted to refocus on the fact that this motion is saying that she did what we've asked her to do and that we believe her, that she has done what we've asked her to do. This motion is not an attack. And I can't think of another better word, but it's saying, thank you, we believe you, let's move on.
Okay, we'll call the question, take the roll call, Ms. Mo.
Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Bruce?
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrosio?
Yes.
Mr. Loba?
Yes. Yes. I will read motion two, to address.
Can I have a motion two?
I'm sorry, Jay.
Can I have a motion two?
Can I have a motion to address the remaining records retained by Ms. Clark as part of the board's policy development and adoption process addressing the accessing and retaining of district records by departing and former board members and employees?
Motion.
Second.
I will second.
Can I have a second?
Can I have a second? I got this, I got that second. Discussion on motion two?
Yes. When I asked Mr. Faulkner about if any board has ever developed a policy on this, in closed session, whether any board has designed a policy concerning this issue, he said no. How are we going to look at the board if we don't have any policy in place or developing policies that no other board has really considered creating? Beyond that, before we have a policy, we decide to admonish a former board member for breaking a future policy we haven't invented yet. We might make national news, but not in good way. To me, we should just let press do what they do and we should, I, I, I believe that this is a witch hunt for something that, that we shouldn't be looking for. We should trust our oath, the oath that we take, to the oath that we have all taken. And if we're going after Mrs. Clark, we need to go after every other former board member that was ever here and all future board members. So I completely disagree that we're making policy, that we're blaming Mrs. Clark for policies we don't even have yet.
And I think ROI person and, and then given, you know, the amount of time and money that have gone into just to kind of get a confirmation. I, you know, in regards to motion two, you know, addressing the policy is one thing, but, you know, at this point, there's this thing about grandfathering in. And if, I don't know, I guess it just needs backwards to establish a policy and then go after someone afterward, after it's established. So.
Jess?
Yeah, I think, you know, definitely speaking to Bruce's point that this is a really unique situation. Because I don't believe there's been precedent in the decades that you've been, or the, I don't know if it's multiple decades, but it is, oh, okay, I'm right. That, that anyone has downloaded 20,000 emails. And so this is uncharted territory and there had to be, and that speaks to the amount of research that had to go into being able to advise the board in the first place and then our unfortunate time gap between discovering it and needing to, and being able to understand the landscape there. And I, Bob and I had a policy meeting this morning, our first. And so, and we discussed at that meeting how, you know, often districts, and our district certainly takes policies from press, but that District Forty-One, as in all things, we go above and beyond. And we do have a number of policies that are on top of what press provides. And our, and in particular, our policy nine point O is one that came from our legal counsel and that is above and beyond press and in reaction to issues going on at the time. And we even went above and beyond what you developed because of things going on specifically in our district. So there is precedent for creating policies that are above and beyond and as a reaction to things that happen. And so I think that that's important, that we look at that and, and be thoughtful about it. And, and also it speaks to, you know, I think we've heard, we've outlined in the statement, a number of policies that we feel are relevant. There continues to be pushback about that that's not, that those maybe aren't specific enough. And we're hearing that from some of the board members. And so I think we do need to look at it so that we can make sure that it's really clear.
I think it's also important, you know, whether it be on the board or whether it be in a private sector. In a private sector, you're an employee working on an employment agreement, a confidentiality agreement, and less than two weeks before leaving your employment, you download, whether purposely or inadvertently, some 20,000 emails that contain confidential information relating to that company, that, that issue's going to need to be addressed. And no one up here is saying that Ms. Clark has done anything wrong. In fact, we've, we've, we've agreed to accept her, her assertion that, that this was an accident. That this was something that was inadvertent. And for accepting her assertions that she's deleted them is maintaining that confidentiality. That being said, it has, given the timeframe of it and given the obligation of board members to maintain that confidentiality, we needed these assertions in writing. And we received those assertions today and those have been accepted today. And, and I think that, that's what we're just in a positive direction. And I think it's important to develop that policy going forward. You know, you learn from actions that take place and now we can move forward with this. And again, I'm thankful that we were able to work together to resolve this matter in an amicable fashion.
Um, I'm going to have to disagree with Mr. Curry's assertion that we're admonishing anybody here. We strictly try, taking care of an administrative issue. There's nothing here where we're saying. We're not asking for an admission of guilt, we're not inferring any kind of wrongdoing. We're strictly after the security of the confidential records.
Julie, did you? I would only add that looking at this motion, the first part of it, to address the remaining records retained by Ms. Clark, this isn't in dispute. Ms. Clark isn't disputing that she has additional records. She's attested to having additional records. They're still to be secured. And then as we get into the second part of the motion, the board's policy development, it's clearly, as Jess outlined, to be future oriented, to address a matter that is now relevant and current to the, to the district. And so this would be a new policy that would apply going forward and should help perhaps to resolve the remaining records that are still in Ms. Clark's possession. Okay.
I think we should, oh, please say go.
Well, Bruce, did you want to make one more comment before we call the vote?
I think we should invest more time in security. I hear about all these, I mean, she was able to simply go in and do this. And we need to invest in our security and instead of talking about what the nefarious Mrs. Clark, she's not nefarious here. And, and yet our security on our computers is haphazard in fact. I would hate to see us spend all this time and money hiring lawyers and using board time to do this instead of looking at how to prevent us from being hacked and then, you know, Bitcoin or hijack, not hijack, uh, ransom so that we get all our computer information back. That's what I want to concentrate this board's time on. That and the education of children, not Mrs. Clark and the policy she has not broken.
Thank you. Duly noted. Ms. Mo, you can call the roll.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
No.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Still?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrosio?
No.
Mr. Loba?
Yes. Yes. May I have a motion to deny Ms. Clark's request with respect to legal representation and expense reimbursement as her actions appear beyond the scope of her authority and are not otherwise required or authorized by law?
I'm.
Second, second please?
Second.
Did you? Yeah. The discussion? Ted, I'm sorry, Bruce, before you start, I'm sorry, Ted was about to, you can't see him, but Ted was about to speak.
I, I already spoke to this a little bit before, that we have to focus on the fact that we're, we're talking about action or inaction that was actually after she was on the board. Simply asking for return or destruction of these records that she doesn't have the privilege to have access to beyond the tenure, tenure on the board. So I think that was pretty clear.
Okay. Bruce?
To me, this is the worst thing we can do is not represent her legally. And how we have been able to agree to not pay her legal defense when she was a volunteer board member and should be indemnified by the board for her actions while she was on the board, but we're the ones suing her. The first response, the first letter we had to her was of the possible legal action. We need to support board members and people in the community who want to volunteer to do this. But if we continue as a board to try and sue them, it's not going to be good for the community. We will let, we will have fewer and fewer representatives who are folks who want to run for the board. And it'll, we'll just have lawyers running for the board at a certain point. But to me, defending herself is unconscionable.
Thank you.
I will, you know.
Jason, would you like to? Oh, I'm sorry.
We're a fifty-three, fifty-five million dollar a year company and Mrs. Clark has Mr. Clark and herself working to raise four children and we're suing her, okay? Or threatening to sue her, or threatening her so much that she has to get a lawyer. This is terrible. It makes our district look terrible.
Now, to that, to that point, I mean, I, I, I think that's actually a mischaracterization because following a, a conversation with, with Ms. Clark and Dr. Bruto and Mr. Faulkner on June twenty-sixth, we did request her to confirm in writing essentially what the, the affirmation representations that are contained in the July ninth letter from Ms. Clark's attorney. And if Ms. Clark didn't want to sign that, Ed, so we didn't need to go this far to her to get an attorney. We did, and that's fine, it happens. Attorneys got involved, the issue was resolved and we can move forward. That being said, you know, when attorneys get involved and correspondence is set, part of that correspondence, as I was read earlier, says that Ms. Clark used a Google archival platform installed and supplied by District Forty-One for use by all school board members to attempt to copy and archive certain emails she authored and received. That's not the role of a board member to, to, to copy and archive emails, that's just not our role. And especially to archive and maintain documents right, right, right before you're leaving the board. You know, that being said, I don't think there's a basis to, to provide reimbursement or indemnity for defeat at this point. And, you know, especially given, given the fact of the purpose for which the action is stated to have been taken.
Thank you. Julie, two.
I just want to clarify too, that our very first communication with Ms. Clark on this matter did not threaten anything. It was to ask her not to destroy it and to kind of be on hold, like we were on hold while we figured out what we needed to do. And, and then in the subsequent emails, there was an, not a threat, but an outlining of what our responsibilities were as the board and what our possible actions were. At no time did our board take an action to sue Ms. Clark. We are not suing Ms. Clark, though that was one of the options. And it's not one any of us wanted to take and that's why we had three closed session meetings. Well, I won't speak for the whole board, but I, I, I know that's not a road I wanted to go down. So we had three closed sessions to move this along slowly, but surely. And, and today we're here. Unfortunately, Ms. Clark felt she needed legal representation. And, and I feel for her, I, I wouldn't want to pay the legal bills. I've seen what they are there. I don't, I haven't seen hers, but I've seen, I've seen the district's. And, and that's not, they're, it's not inexpensive, so. But I, again, I agree with Jason and Ted in their assessment of needing to do that at a district basis.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to reiterate what Jessica said, that we are not suing. And initial communications, which we will be taking a motion to disclose so that we can show everybody exactly what all of these communications are. And in my view, we've been acting above board every step of the way, trying to proceed very carefully and cautiously, trying to do this in a quiet manner and, and giving very reasonable options. I think anybody who takes a look at any of these requests in terms of, just, just tell us that you, you destroyed this, this is fine, right? Right now I have a consulting agreement with the company that I work for. And my agreement says, upon the expiry or termination of this agreement, the consultant will return to the company any property documentation, records or confidential information, which is the property of the company. Right? That's in my contract right there. It'd be nice that we had it spelled out quite that plainly in our policy, but it's sort of, sort of common sense. And I put that in the agreement. I, I actually drafted this agreement, right? And that, and so at the end of my term, I'm going to show them, I'm going to say, here, my, I returned everything. And there you go. And then, and I feel like that's the option that we gave. And it's really too bad that Ms. Clark felt like she needed to have legal representation.
Okay. With that.
I'd like to remind Mrs. Butler.
Wait, 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 I think Bruce was, oh, are you sure, Linda?
I'd like to remind Mrs. Butler that we called legal counsel without even asking Mrs. Clark what happened. So we didn't even give her a, hey, what's going on? We just threatened legal action. They threatened to sue her in writing. And Ted, we don't have, we've never signed a statement or a policy that, that says that we can have anything to do with records after we're board members. There's no policy on it, it states nothing. And we're not, we're not contracted employees for the district. So that's, there's a huge difference between being a contracted employee who's getting paid money by a company to do something for them and a volunteer board member with four children and expenses to pay. So I, I, again, I, I, I find it the fact that we waited two and a half weeks, that we first threatened legal action, we wouldn't provide legal, legal help. And, and, you know, the first thing, and, and we never have a contract or policy that really states what we should be doing with the materials we have and then were emailed to us by people when we were legally, when we were elected board members. I mean, there's no policy on it. So there's no policy to help us. So, there's no policies about us. Right off the door, we didn't ask Ms. Clark what happened, we waited two and a half weeks until the board presidency changes, and then we go after her with legal things. It seems unfair.
I would actually disagree that there, that statement, that there's no policy, there is policy. I just said that there's nothing explicitly stated as simply as that. And I think there's also federal and state law which covers these records, and as a publicly elected official and oath of office, you've agreed to follow those laws.
And, and if there was a misunderstanding of that, and they were downloaded, fine, but when, when you're alerted to the fact that it is actually breaking policy and that we need written confirmation of those being handled a certain way.
Is that retention?
That, that's the issue here is, is that, that clarification.
The problem with asking her for that is if you sign that, the pain will be over, okay? You're asking her to admit some sort of guilt before she's been accused of any crime in court of law or anywhere else. That to me is not the way we should be handling ourselves as a board.
And I would agree, and that isn't.
And we should give you a heads up, hey, I know this, this download happened, what happened?
That's actually what we did.
That's what we just done, eighteen or seventeen, and not waiting until, you know, June or May.
Well, I mean, like I said, I, I asserted the whole time that we should, I wish we could do something a little bit different.
We're talking over each other, we're like.
It's insane.
Linda, did you want to make your statement again?
Sorry, Bruce can't see me talk.
I know, that's why I didn't know.
I'll need gesture.
Go ahead, go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, that's been, kind of, the whole time I asserted that this is how, how we should treat people, and having, like, and I keep, I'm beating down, like, you know, and I do, I do, as a board member, I am, you know, we need to, you know, kind of have some sort of affirmation that, and it's, it's always been assumed, to be honest, like, the way we have handled confidential information, I think, has been, you know, it's, I guess, there's, there's a level of trust, but I don't know how that's been lost. And I was going to bring this up, but, you know, a board member, a board member, you know, mentioned that we have to discuss quite extensively about legal application, and I, I don't know. So, you know, I think, I think that just kind of, kind of speaks to when we're, I don't know, the way, the way we're going about it, and I, I just, I can't, I can't just sit here and, you know, and honestly be outvoted and then knowing that we, this is how we're using our district. And I, I just want to clarify that none of the things that we asked Ms. Clark to sign asked her to admit any guilt or accused her of any wrongdoing, it was simply a confirmation that the records were destroyed or returned in, in writing. So, I want to clarify that, because I think it's important, and, and, yeah, I do think that would be bad if we were asking her to do that, but we didn't. Well, we're like, every time we're doing something, it's laying down some sort of, you know.
And I think that, I think that's the point, in all honesty.
I think there's just, I mean, I think we, I think if you kind of put her in her shoes, or someone who's a, you know, private citizen, and having a district letter out like that, you know, I don't know.
But I think that's kind of the point, is that, you know, in our correspondence, we, you know, we, we recognize, and as was stated in, in July, that letter from Ms. Clark's attorney, that, okay, after the conversations that, that were had with Ms. Clark, it's okay, that it, it seems like this was an intentional, a tactical glitch, we can see how this happened, we just need you to confirm that you've confirmed, that you've destroyed the documents to return them, and that, you know, you've been hitting confidentiality. It's the fact that she didn't, wouldn't sign that, and that as a district, we know that there's confidential information that is in the possession of people outside of the district that subjects the district to potential liability that we need to protect, and I think it's that retention, that, that's, that's the issue. You know, I, I think the whole time, we, you know, it, whether this backfire was developed, you know, how things happened, understandable, seems like it could have, I don't think there is any nefarious action that, that was taken. It just subsists that retention, and we've got it resolved, and that's great, we're just not at a point to pay for her attorney's fees, because this was, we're talking about the retention of documents by a private citizen that contains district confidential information, and that's just not subject to indemnification by the, by the district.
Julie?
I think, you know, this is an accident, she accidentally downloaded these emails to just say, oh, my gosh, I didn't mean to do this, like, I'm going to try to delete them, show me how to delete them, make sure I do it right, whatever, and then just sign an affidavit, this is a normal thing, like, I've deleted, I've gotten rid of all the things I'm not supposed to have anymore, I promise, with a signature, and that's kind of standard practice, and it didn't need to, it didn't need, it didn't require legal fees, it required just doing it on a seemingly simple thing, swearing that she did it by signing a form, and she was given multiple opportunities to edit that form, to say what she wanted to say, that it would be truthful to her, that she felt good about signing it, and we could never get that to happen until she retained a lawyer, and then we finally could come to an agreement. So, it never required legal fees. And also, we were informed by Mr. Faulkner that paying for her legal fees might even be illegal, and I think that's definitely not a path we want to go down either. And so, I don't, it doesn't seem to me to be appropriate to incur that expense.
We wouldn't let her, we wouldn't let her have time to actually get, I mean, she asked for delay of time on, uh, June twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, uh, the week before July fourth, so she could get a lawyer, and she asked for us to delay the July tenth meeting, and we did not let her do that. To me, that would have been the appropriate thing to do, if we were going to show respect to a fellow board member.
So, if I could, no, two things I wanted to underscore Julie's point, that by Ms. Clark's own affirmation, she did download the emails, she did not intend to get what she got, and then she downloaded it, deleted it, I'm sorry. She was a sitting board president, she downloaded the material when she was the sitting board president, she doesn't attest to when she downloaded, when she deleted them, but if you make the assumption, and you give her the benefit of the doubt, that she deleted them very shortly thereafter, she was in a position.
I believe the lawyer does.
Again, immediately, it does, you're correct, Bruce, your assertion is she immediately deleted the entire email. Even better, even better. Then she certainly could have brought to the district's attention that she did what she did, but she's deleted them, and she wants the district to acknowledge that. She could have brought that forward. She had plenty of opportunity to do it, particularly if she has done something quite accidentally. So, you know, the district took time appropriately with legal counsel to research the matter. Ms. Clark could have saved all of that time, and this could have been addressed, to Linda's point, while she was sitting on the board, if she had come forward and said, I did this, it's accident, it was accidental, I think Ms. Clark is knowledgeable enough to know that the district would have a record of that activity, so she could have cleared that up very, very simply, very easily.
The first contact we had was, we're going to sue you for possibly state legal action again.
You can take, Bruce, you can make that statement as much, you can make.
That's not what you mean, you're asking, hey, what happened?
Excuse me, Bruce, excuse me, Bruce, you can make that statement as often as you want, it won't change the actual context and substance of the communication which will be made, which we're offering to make public with the fourth motion, and people can read whether or not that legal, whether that threat to sue.
She downloaded and deleted it, she had meetings with all board, who never informed her of any of this going on.
She could have stepped forward, I'm not going to debate with you, she has equal opportu, she has, Bruce, excuse me.
I'd like to call a question.
You're going to leave your statement to Ted?
Excuse me. We'll, we're not going to apparently persuade each other at this point. I think we should, in fact, move to roll call, everyone has had a chance to comment on the, on the motion. Ms. Wilk?
Mr. Budmer?
Yes.
Mr. Restine?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
No.
Ms. Robina?
Yes.
Ms. Robina?
Yes.
Ms. Robina?
Same.
Dr. Bruno?
Uh, yes. May I have? Ask for a motion there. I'm about to do that. May I have a motion to make the July ninth letter from Ms. Clark's attorney, along with the email and written communications on this issue between the district and Ms. Clark, a part of the record of this meeting?
Motion.
Second, please.
Second.
Julie, second's, discussion?
You know, it was requested made by, by Mrs. Clark, about, in the July ninth letter from her attorney, that the letter may be read and made a part of the record, so I think it makes sense to do so, and if we're going to make, if Ms. Clark, that letter a part of the record, in order to give full complete context, we should make all the correspondence, which is referenced in that letter, and all of the correspondence on this matter also a part of the record to clearly and accurately, transparently reflect everything that went down.
Thank you. Jess?
Are we going to make the text?
Hold on, Bruce, Bruce, I'm sorry, Bruce, I'm sorry, wait, Bruce, I'll come back to you, Jess was just about to speak, you can't see her, it's just the conditions, I'll come back to you, Jess.
I, I think it's important that we make these public as part of our discussion. I, I think there's always a call for more transparency, this is completely transparent. There's obviously been a period of time where we tried to handle this, well, we were trying to understand it, to know how to move forward and to, and as we took our baby steps forward, trying, trying to resolve the issue where it could not be public, but now that we're at the point where Ms. Clark has requested that her letter be read, and, and she's asked that we take action, and we want to have closure on this so that we can move forward and focus on student-centered initiatives, I think it's, I think it's a, it's a good idea for us to, to put these forward. I hope the community takes away that we, from, from these communications, our commitment to transparency, that we take our duty to protect student-employee information seriously, that we have a very strong desire to handle matters like this diplomatically, thoughtfully, as efficiently and transparently as possible, and that we also do value the relationships with community members and their time and expertise, the diverse perspectives that they share with us, and, and hopefully you see that in how we've attempted, attempted to resolve this and are now honoring Ms. Clark's request to have this read into public record.
Thank you. Bruce?
Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, I think that we're going to include the, are we going to include your, your text to her initially, or at some point?
Uh, the text to talk about the email?
Yeah.
You were talking about.
Do we have that?
You don't have that, but I've attested to the fact that I sent a note to ask we talk to her, and that she rejected talking to me about the matter and requested email or written communication.
All right, email, okay, so that was in the sense that get her to talk one-on-one, and if you want to, just more writing and things like that.
Right.
All right. Um, are we going to include the legal information that highlighted nine hundred, nine dots of zero zero information policy? Would the highlights include it?
You mean to attach the actual policy to the, to the, as part of the record?
We, we got, we got something with highlights as to what policy she wrote, and I think we were, in my opinion, which isn't a legal opinion, we were picking and choosing stuff kind of haphazardly, trying to make Ms. Clark look as, as bad as possible, in my opinion. So, I, I'm wondering if we were going to get that as part of this, too.
Was that, was that earlier emails?
I don't remember that.
I don't know what those are.
I don't remember that.
I think I know.
Um, it's Todd.
Promotion calls for the emails and the communication on this issue between the district and Ms. Clark, not to mention that they have been presented at the court, although the, those documents that we reference in the board's discussion tonight, reference the policy that is available.
The policies are available, and we'll reference them, and people can read them.
They were in the statement.
No, but the highlighted ones where we picked and chose, chose, what we're going to use.
Well, but, but they're in my state, they're in the statement that the board agreed to have me read, so that will also be part of the record, and members of the public interested bodies can look at those particular policies if they, if they choose so. I, I don't.
Okay, and I can release those, because the attorney has client privileges from, I'm the, I'm the client, right? So, I can release that?
No.
I'm not breaking attorney.
No, 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 you're not, no.
The board, the board has the, not the individual board members, has the authority to waive the attorney client privilege. That would take a motion by the board, motion and a vote.
Mm-hmm. Are there other comments on motion four?
Todd, is that coming?
Hold on.
Bruce, I, I should, you, we'll need to have you identify what your, what specific documents you have, you can take a look at them and make that judgment.
We can do. Now, Linda.
Oh, I was just going to say transparency, it's tricky, because it just depends on what the issue is, or what, how you want to use it, because I mean, we've had, well, I don't know, we've had, anyway, I don't want to go back to past issues, but, anyway, I actually, I was going to, no, on this, I mean, you know, I'm thoroughly embarrassed by our actions, and I see this as, I think we got, I, you know, I talked quite a bit about, you know, what's our endpoint, what's our end game, I guess, and I, I know repeatedly, at least, I, there's, obviously, there's a lot of disagreement, but I think at the end of the day, we, we were really concerned about obtaining some sort of confirmation that, you know, the download had been secured, or something, or whatever the phrase you've been using, and as far as I'm concerned, we achieved that objective, kind of bringing it out in open is really making a spectacle of things and subject to, you know, you know, keyboard, behind a keyboard type of, I guess, I'm having a hard time finding words, but, so at the end of the day, I, I just, I feel like we've, you know, achieved the objective, that's kind of where I am.
Okay. Are there any other folks who want to comment on, on the last? Hold on, Bruce, before you go back.
Yeah.
Good.
I, I mentioned before that I think it's important to release it, to show the careful and cautious process that we've gone through. I think it's also important to recognize that probably these are subject to FOIA disclosure anyway, so let's just go ahead and let everybody have it and save them all the trouble. I, I think we worked really well, trying very careful and very deliberate here, and sake of transparency and to show the community how we, how we did carefully deliberate all this, I think, I think it's important.
Thank you.
So, what do you want, uh, Ted, you want to release the attorney's note?
No, 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 no.
No, no, he's Todd. No, no, he's talking.
Okay.
No, this is the motion, this is- Just the motion, Bruce, he's talking about the motion.
Oh, just, I'd like to say, uh, I'd like to know how we can get the attorney's release, how do you, I'd like to be transparent, how do you vote about getting the- the board to vote on, uh, releasing those, the attorney, attorney findings or attorney opinions?
You asked for it to be put in a meeting, in an agenda item or items for future consideration of future meetings, you asked for that item to be placed on a future agenda or it could ask the previous meeting.
We can do that now? I'd like the board consensus to try to do that.
No.
It's not the proper part in a- in a special meeting, the only per- the only visit that can be, um, discussed at the special meeting is the, um, topic that's been set in the agenda, so we actually legally cannot.
And Bruce, we're not gonna kind of debate the pros and cons of doing that and fully understand what, we don't even know exactly what those are that you're referring to, uh, at- at this late moment. If we're gonna do it, we need to do it in a non-trivial, uh, and thoughtful manner so that board members can- can properly-
Okay, we put on to the next meeting, please.
Well-
I've actually already asked for it, we put on, Bruce, as to, uh, at the last regular meeting, I asked for this issue to be placed on a future agenda to address this, not on an individual of a attorney opinion basis, but globally, uh, how the board will address, um, the-
Legal counsel.
Releasing or maintaining, um, communications with counsel and advice therefrom.
Good.
I've already asked for it on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
In the interest of transparency, what would happen if I did release those?
You'd probably be subject to some kind of discipline of a possible, we, I'd really have to look into it, but I'd recommend against it.
Todd? We are, we're getting way past the special meeting, let's pull back.
And to try to be transparent.
Um, good, uh, you'll get plenty of opportunities to do that. Uh, all right, let's, uh, then move to call the roll, Ms. Moak?
Mrs. Zell?
Yes.
Mrs. Butterbur?
Yeah.
Mr. Ambroseo?
No.
Mr. Curry?
No.
Mr. Oba?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Askey?
Yes. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn the July ten, two thousand and nineteen, meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.